Thank you all for coming. We haven't had a town hall for a while and pleasantly, we haven't had an emergency that required a town hall for a while, and I take that as a really healthy sign for the university. We should certainly do one of these to kick off every semester, and so consider this our opportunity to just catch up a little bit. A legislative session's starting. That's a really important issue, and we're going to talk about that in some detail. And whenever we have a legislative session starting, I think it's appropriate for us to tell you the positions that we're taking, the topics, the hot topics that are coming up, so that you have some idea of where we're heading and get to interact with the views that we have on how the session and the BDRs proceed. We also have, believe it or not, a fair amount of progress through our planning implementation activities. We'll tick those off, not so much to dwell on them today, but to let you know things are moving. And again, in a very solid way. I won't say a dramatic way. I'll say solid. Steady, solid progress is a good thing. And finally, we'll talk a little bit about kind of our master planning efforts and the UNLV Now project because it's hard to pick up the paper now and not read about it, and I thought maybe there would be some questions, and we're still in the middle of a number of hot issues in that. So, up on the stage, of course, is our provost. I won't say our new provost anymore. You stop being new when the semester turned. So, now you're the executive vice president and provost, John White. We have the head of our faculty senate, Shannon Sumter, and of course, our chief financial officer and nickel pincher, Jerry Bomani. Let's start talking about the legislative session, and we won't go into tremendous detail, but there are at least two or three items that I really feel we have to focus on and dwell on because I anticipate you'll have positions and opinions about those items, and I want you to feel very free to express those opinions to legislators. I spent about two weeks now, I spent an hour and a half with the governor, going over all of our positions. And without trying to sugarcoat it too much, first, it was a very positive meeting. Second, we used the opportunity to help the governor understand higher education better and understand the business elements of higher education, because most people don't actually understand there's business elements to what we do. We have revenue flows, we have costs, we have coverages, we have all kinds of bills to pay, and he needed to know where we are and what he could expect, particularly given the ambitious agenda the governor has for economic diversification and for improving graduation rates. And in short, I basically said, well, do you expect something for something or something for nothing? And how do we deal with those issues in terms of funding adequacy as we grow? But the main topic of conversation, and the one I think that resonates most with all of you, was salary cuts and benefits. And I gave him a very straightforward and simple discussion about what the market was in higher education. We probably spent 30 minutes on this topic. And what I explained was, we haven't given out raises for over four years now. In fact, we have handed out furloughs and salary cuts to the tune of 4.7%. I don't need to actually tell all of you that. You know it. You experience it. In addition, we've had very significant benefits reductions, which have amounted to, well, I'd call it about a $4,000 out-of-pocket pay cut, and that's after-tax dollars. And these are damaging to the university. They're damaging because the university is made of you, and it's your hard work that's kept the wheels on through some very, very tough times. It's your hard work and dedication to our institution that have helped to create the successes we've had as we move forward in areas like general education and in some of the more creative things that we're doing around research and research collaboration. And I told him that unless he wants a brain drain in the state of Nevada, that he needs to help us at least restore the cuts, and even better, to return COLA and merit into the faculty pool, because that's what the competition was doing. And even if you can't understand it for the state of Nevada, you have to be able to understand what regional and national competition's doing to us. A great way for me to gather information about comparable states is when I go to athletic conference meetings for the Mountain West. So, we hear from California, we hear from Utah, we hear from Colorado, we hear from New Mexico, we hear from Arizona, and Texas and other places. And what I will tell you is that all of my colleagues this year will be handing out raises, anywhere between 4 and 6%. And they didn't have the cuts, or if they had cuts, they'd been restored a couple of years ago. Some of them have been handing out raises for a couple of years. I will tell you, the chancellor and I are in utter agreement on this issue. We both feel strongly that faculty and staff compensation needs to be restored, and then we need to begin showing people the light at the end of the tunnel in terms of raises and in terms of merit, because you're the ones who make a difference. You're the ones who are educating our students. You're the ones who are providing great services to the university, and you're the ones who are being the innovators who are driving economic diversification. And those are all things that our state is keenly interested in. So, yes, we are a public institution, but we have our own market forces, and our market forces say, you all deserve fair salaries for the work that you do. Now, I think you can tell, I get a little worked up about the topic. It's a topic that's come up on a number of different venues. You can hear me talk on Jim Rogers' show about it, tweeting this week. In a couple, three weeks, it'll be the face-to-face interviews, and I bring it up in public panel. In fact, to the extent where the Las Vegas chamber and our regional development authorities and even our GOAT offices understand now that fair compensation for people who make a difference is the right thing to do has penetrated. The sad truth is, the governor doesn't feel he has the revenue dollars to make this happen. So, what will happen specifically this session is that you will have your furloughs cut in half. That's it. All right? You will, in other words, you'll get the equivalent of about 1.1, 1.2%?
1.5.
1.15% restoration, and then there'll be some modifications, although we haven't really waded through the precise details of the paperwork that may reflect on classified personnel.
Step increases.
Step increases, but they don't come until FY 2015. So, there's going to be some challenges after this session. What you need to know from me is, we will continue to push on this front, because no one's more deserving, because you matter, and because we need to be competitive as a state with the other states in the country. As far as benefits go, I'm going to actually, which is the next most urgent topic, maybe the most urgent topic, I'm going to ask Jerry to come up and give you an update on the progress that we've made and where we think the session may end up.
I'll go through this fairly quickly, and some of you, I think, have seen some of this information, but I'll start with retirement. Our retirement programs are, there are two of them, Public Employees Retirement System, defined benefit program, and then our defined contribution retirement program. Governor recommended an increase of 1% for the employee and 1% for the employer for both programs. Now, if you're in PERS, you don't get any different benefits, and you'll have to contribute another percent of your salary. If you're in the defined contribution retirement program, you'll have to contribute another percent, but the state matches that percent in there. On the healthcare area, don't know what the rates might be for PEBP for next year. They'll do a rate setting here this spring, but I think the best news we've had more recently, and I think you've seen this in the email, is one of our faculty members, Dr. Chris Cochran, was appointed by the governor to the PEBP board, and that's something we worked on. He has expertise particularly in this area, and I think he'll help continue to move the PEBP board in a way that will give us some long-term benefits. But for fiscal year '14, there's, starting next July, or this coming July, there's no real change that I would see. The state slightly unfortunately reduced the contribution by the state for next year, brought it up for the following year, and I think the good news is, we've had discussions with the leadership of PEBP. They want to work with NSHE to basically relook at the healthcare structure that we present and provide to employees effective July 1st, 2014. So, we're going to go through a process this year to basically solicit and look for options to the programs that are now provided for PEBP to see if we can get better coverage within the budget we have. So, not for, nothing for 2014 fiscal year, but for a year out, I think there could be some hope there.
You can see, and many thanks to Jerry, Sean, Chris Cochran, the folks in HR, and others. We've been waving this flag now for two years, and we've had some better success with this than we have with issues like the salary issue. But we think it's incredibly important, and we won't take the pedal off, the foot off the gas on this one. There are a few other things that I can mention about the legislative session, but I do have to chuckle. When I went in to talk with the governor, the first thing he said is, well, sure looks a whole lot better right now than it did two years ago, and he's right. We're not looking at any cuts, and I think that's really good news. There are some very, very small and modest incremental changes that will come up, particularly around economic diversification and the benefits issue, which I think is one of the more positive developments that we've seen. But the big topics that impact UNLV and the Nevada system of higher education are that the new formula will be on the table. The new formula is better than the old formula. It does create a measure of equity, and of course, once and for all, we hope it will separate tuition, which our students put into the coffers, and instead of going to the state, those monies will stay on our campus where we can guarantee you that they'll be spent to benefit your education. We also, there is, as most of you know, a controversy around the formula issues, but it's not controversy on the part of the southern institutions. The equity that will be created is one that's long overdue, and so we're in favor of that formula and will back it. The governor also took a moment to say that he's going to write a bill draft to try to promote as part of economic diversification efforts that Las Vegas become the intellectual hub for gaming and hospitality on a global basis. That isn't just a hotel school issue. That's an issue that will really take a vast multidisciplinary approach from across campus, whether it's architecture, sustainability, hospitality, computer science and engineering, cybersecurity. They all impinge on this effort. There will be some seed money in it, is our understanding. We're not clear on the source of that yet, whether it's Knowledge Fund or something else, but we take it as a nod, a very positive nod, that the governor has singled us out and has asked us to participate in an initiative that the state feels is very important and certainly is important to Las Vegas. The Knowledge Fund has $10 million allocated to it in the governor's budget, $5 million per year. It's not a lot of money. We're not convinced it's an ongoing source of revenue, but it's a start. It's a start of the kind of investments that we need that will hopefully jump seed some faculty hires and some capacity to support specific sectors of the economy that we're trying to grow, particularly knowledge-based economy. We will continue to and have the speakers' support, as well as the majority leader of the senate's support and the governor's support, go for a tax increment zone for the UNLV Now project, the master planned areas that we've discussed. And if you missed the master planning discussions, it lives on the web. We'd be happy to revisit that with you, but that would be a significant piece of how we would begin to finance this rather ambitious project. And finally, an area in which I hope you will all participate is that we need our state to understand a few things about the investment they're making in higher education. I use the word "investment" pointedly because, given that we generate $913 million direct dollars into the economy, given that $300 million is export economy a year on the $124 million investment that the state makes, we return large multiples in direct dollars and spending into this region. And as the state invests more in us, we give larger and larger returns, both in export economy as well as dollars spent internally. What we are concerned about right now is that while the new funding formula creates far greater equity, that we're taking a smaller ply and we're slicing that pie differently. We're not growing the pie. And as we grow and gain new students, we will have to have the academic infrastructure, the support infrastructure, the buildings and facilities, and we will also have to have the faculty to guarantee that we can teach them. And the tuition dollars that we generate on what is a tuition that is still by all national standards very low, is going to be challenging. So, we need the state to understand that in order for us to have adequate capacity to meet the needs of a state that's growing, that needs an excess population, that needs to make sure we're producing degrees, that we're going to have to have a commitment that as we grow, the state will continue to fund and support both students and the development of higher education. Those are the points that we would, are most concerned about. I'd be happy, as we get to the Q and A session, to address any of them in more detail, but they're the hot-button issues for higher education in this session. Now, we've got a few other things that we're going to go very, very quickly over them that I wanted to update you about. First, in the lovely world of accreditation, we used to get a visit once every 10 years. We knocked it out of the park like we did last time, and then we saw them in 10 more years. Now, we see them every three years if we want to or not. And so, that means that, oops, that means that we need to be ready as a campus for accreditation visit every three years. Now, this year's going to be a weird one, and to talk to you about how unusual it is, I've asked our executive vice president and provost, who heads up the accreditation team, to give you a very quick gloss so that you can be prepared for it. But here's what I want to say to you. Last time we had an accreditation visit was a little over two years ago, two and a half years ago, and we had it during the most difficult time in UNLV's history, period. It was a time when we were losing departments, losing faculty, losing staff, when the big budget cuts were hitting, and yet, you pulled together as a campus. You pulled together in the best way. And because of you and because of your positive attitude and because of the hard work you've done every day to keep things moving, we had arguably the best accreditation report that I've ever seen and one of the better ones that I think Northwest has handed out. That spirit is part of the spirit of UNLV, and it's because of you. I hope this time, we can pull together for this one, although again, you're going to hear, and I'm smiling slightly now, about its unusual nature right now. John?
I wasn't sure there'd be anything else to say about accreditation. All of you know that we're scheduled to have an accreditation visit in mid-April. It turns out that we've been selected for a pilot program, which I think is testament to the great job we did on accreditation two and a half years ago, for a remote accreditation visit. So, here's the thing, we have no idea what that is. As a consequence, what we've decided to do is to have a mock accreditation visit happen on February 19th and 20th. You to treat that as the accreditation visit, in large part because we don't know exactly when the remote accreditation visit will take place. It could take place anytime after we've sent our report in, which is March 1st. We imagine that it might take place more or less in April, when they were supposed to come before, but that would be a guess. So, we want to treat the February 19th, 20th as the visit. We want you to gear up for it. We want you to read the report, be prepared to answer questions, and in order to make it very real, we've selected our former provost, who has done some of these visits, though not a remote one, no one's done a remote visit before, to do an actual visit here on campus, and he will have identified by then several of our colleagues who've also done visits. And they will conduct the visit, they will call you up, they will show up in your office, they will ask you the same questions that they would ask if they were on a visit at some other place. Now, what we do know about the remote visit is that like the three-year visits that happen on campus, they're going to identify a team of three people. Those three people will have multiple schools, and so as a consequence, they will be focusing on unique and narrow parts of what's going on on campus, and this is a reason for us to be very, very focused. Already, many of you may have been involved in trying to get our websites up to date since this visit is remote. The information they're going to have on us will come primarily from the report and from the public information we have readily available, i.e., our many, many websites. If there is a resource issue related to that, we've already lined up resources, people, not money, to make sure that we get those websites together, and I hope that you'll work diligently on that. Accreditation is of course really important, but it's also a great opportunity for us to look at ourselves, particularly over the last three years, and think about how we've done on standard too, which is what this issue is about. And we hope that you'll use accreditation and the mock visit in particular to be introspective as well and to figure out ways that we can get better. We really have to do that. The next item up is planning, and I'll just slide there so we can go much more quickly. The provost's office is new, though I guess we're not new anymore, but over the last six months, we've been working really, really hard on a wide variety of issues. Because that list is so long, I won't try and bore you with even substantial pieces of it here, but my office is working on a mid-year report that you can expect in the next several weeks that will at least outline some of the issues that we've taken up. Our strategy has been to jump into everything. I understand that there's an issue with doing that, i.e., maybe you don't do some of the things that are very important, but given the last four years, we have so many issues that are in play that there's a substantial problem, I think, with prioritizing, because then you identify a whole swath of very important issues and say, we'll get to these in two years. Well, we don't have two years. So, you'll see that our list is very long. It's stressing myself and the staff, but you know, that's what we bargained for when we jumped into this. So, in any event, look forward to that. Let me touch on a couple of things very quickly, just to highlight what we've accomplished to some extent. General ed and first-year experience is going ahead very nicely, so we are moving forward on that, and a great part of our success there has to do with your contributions and your commitment to that. We've already gotten accolades for what has been described as an extremely ambitious plan on our part, and if we can pull this off, and every evidence, all the evidence suggests that we are doing a good job at doing that, we'll have something really special to highlight for the world about UNLV, but also for our students, really helping us with persistence issues and similar questions going along. In the meantime, the chancellor has launched a e-learning steering committee, which is talking about MOOCs primarily, but several other e-delivery systems. That process will culminate at the end of this month, end of next month, rather, and head into the next Regents meeting. In the meantime, we've created our own internal committee that should be reporting out especially on how we should respond to MOOCs in the next several weeks. In addition to that, that committee will then go on to talk about how we can improve our response to disruptive learning technologies. You've heard us talk a lot about CORE, but probably haven't seen very much, and that's for an important reason. We decided in the middle part of the fall semester that our CORE initiative really needed to be much more bottom-up than some other initiatives have been on campus. As a consequence, we created a faculty steering group, which has been working diligently over the last several months, and they are likely to have a CORE summit or several CORE summits in the next several weeks or in the next many weeks, and we encourage you to come and participate in those. We really want as much input as possible on what CORE could be, how it could be beneficial to you, how we can use CORE to bring together interdisciplinary research and teaching. And so, as a consequence, we're slower with CORE than any of us really wanted, but we think that in the end result of it will be a much better product and a much better institution for promoting cross-disciplinary research and teaching on campus. You saw my note last week on, this week, on Listening to Departments, Part Two. I hope that you will throw yourselves into the process of writing the small document that we want, and we're really looking forward to coming in and talking with you. What we want to know is, what does it take and what is your vision for becoming an excellent department? And while we know that, at least over this biennium, we won't necessarily have the resources to pour into implementing some of your vision, we want to know that vision today so all of our planning in the provost's office and elsewhere can be based on that. And a last note, one of the things we're working on, we have quite a lot of transfer students. Getting transfer students here to be successful is really one of the keys to our, improving our graduation numbers. And in order to aid that, we've committed to a transfer center, which will have a formal opening next week on the 29th at the College of Southern Nevada. We think this will be a great innovation for helping our students come over, prepare to succeed, and without the recurrent problem that we've been hearing over and over, which is students with excess credits that don't apply to the degree that they'd like to pursue, and then of course complaining that somehow UNLV is not paying attention to their credits. We think that it'll address that little issue, but it'll also help us very much in improving the success of Nevadans in obtaining college degrees. I'll turn it back over to Neil so that we can turn to some other aspects of planning. Oops, that's his.
I just got to tell you, I'm really impressed. John's done a terrific job. He's got a lot of enthusiasm for the kinds of things that we've put into place for the planning efforts, and he's doing, as far as I'm concerned, a really good job at implementing, which is what matters. And so, the things that you got were just a taste of some of the things that we've got going on. He talked a little bit about, and we've had a vast exercise called Listening to Departments that Marta Miana and I did last year. This year, we've got, on my side of the shop, we've got Listening to Staff that Reiner Spencer and I are working on, and I'll say, Mike Sauer from the business office is participating in. We've heard it all, the good, the bad, the ugly, more ugly than I wanted to sometimes, but I think it's really an important exercise because it's a way of having direct input so that we can begin to have a good level, a good high-level understanding of the challenges that we face, where we shoot ourselves in the foot versus where someone else is shooting us in the foot. And so, I expect that between that exercise and the Integrate 2 business process review that's going on now, and a lot of you go, what the heck is that? We're now beginning a second phase of Integrate, which is, once the PeopleSoft student information system's in place, we're now looking at business systems. And I think it's no secret to you that our business systems could be a lot better than they are, especially on IT level. So, Jerry is leading that charge with Dr. Zink, who's head of System Computing, and between Jerry and Steve, we're really looking at some major improvements in using IT to help expedite workflow and move documents better and more effectively around the campus. It's not going to happen instantly. As usual, we're understaffed and underbudgeted on it, but it's an important initiative. And part of our linkages between what we're going to do in Integrate 2 and the Listening to Staff exercise is to continue to try to surface the things which are persistent themes that seem to slow us up and make us less effective. So, we really encourage your participation. The provost's side, on the other hand, is looking at Listening to Departments 2, where the focus on trying to understand how we build towards excellence with the programs that are left here is really going to be critical. So, please participate if you can. Other than that, one of the biggest things that we've got going for us right now is we've really been pulling out the stops on how to improve enrollment, enrollment management functions, and how we do a better job with the customer service elements as well as the business elements of admissions. I'm going to tell you, you've made a lot of progress. Enrollment was basically flat this fall, and that was good because we'd been on a decline. Part of that was anticipated because of increased tuition dollars. In certain areas, we saw some real increases in the freshman incoming class. There were some significant increases. We're seeing some increases in retention. That's really positive. And now, as we roll into the spring semester, we saw a tick up in enrollment, and at least the preliminary returns on enrollment for next year are quite positive. One thing you may not know is, we have a full-court press going on and getting national merit scholars and valedictorians and top 10% students. Our honors college is deeply involved in that. Many of the new scholarships that Bill Bolt and I have gone out to raise, the funds for, are being deployed towards bringing in top-quality students. We were passing by an important sector of the market. We were passing by the top slice. We will never do that again. We will always go after the best students here at UNLV because we think they can get the best education here at UNLV. So, I'm telling you that we can look for really improving the quality of the incoming student body. body significantly over the next few years as we apply our admissions and enrollment management efforts towards that. Finally, we're working with economic development vigorously with the state. I will tell you that, and I've said this before, but if you haven't heard it, please, I hope you internalize it, there has never been so much respect for UNLV or support for UNLV in the community, the business community, the chamber, and others. All have UNLV on their list of agenda items for the legislative session. They're concerned that we continue to be able to grow and thrive. They look to us as the place that will be in the vanguard of economic development and diversification, and will help attract new industry, will help support the growth of our economy, and they are very, very supportive. This support will, I think, make a huge difference in how UNLV fares in this legislative session. But the part of that that is the deal is that we have said to them, "We're partners with you, and we want to be the best partners we know how to be," and so we're listening. So when the many of you who I know are out involved, and I'm looking at Rama and Tim and others in the audience in the healthcare sectors, I know that you're out there. I know that you're interacting, and we need to bring those ideas in and make sure that we're serving a public that's looking to us for that leadership to create a potent workforce and a vibrant economy. And our new IT initiatives, along with some of the other things we're doing, I think, point us in the right direction. And again, it's your efforts that make that happen, and so I have to thank you. Finally, UNLV, well, not finally, but for a planning perspective, UNLV, we've long said we want to be one of the top universities in the country. Nevada doesn't have a true first-choice institution. We know that, but UNLV is poised to become that institution, building on the solid core of what we have now after a winnowing, and looking very strategically at how we build the excellence in the programs that are strong already and don't spread ourselves too thin. We think we made huge progress this fall. Our new hires continue to impress me, but the current faculty impress me. With your efforts, we have started to turn some corners. But here's a tidbit for you. If, and now I'm buzzing. Goodness gracious, don't people know how to turn their cell phones off? If I take a hard look, and this is an effort that is being supported out of our institutional research office and Jerry's shop and the provost's office in large measure, if we take a hard look at UNLV and we ask a really simple question, what does it take to be one of the top 100 institutions in this country? Because after all, we're one of 50 states. Nevada should have two top institutions. Some states have more than their share. But what does it take? And if we take a hard look at what it is to be a Carnegie Research One institution, now called extensive as opposed to Research One, and where we are, which is a Carnegie Research-intensive institution, you can see that there's places where we perform pretty well, and there's places where there are gaps between the resources that we have and between the output that we generate. We don't generate as many grant dollars as we need to if we're going to be a Research One university. We don't have quite the scholarly reputation and the number of top 100 programs that we should if we were going to be a top 100 university. But we also don't have the faculty size that we should if we're going to be a top 100 university. We have a little over 700 full-time faculty. I just want you to hold that number in your head for a second. That's with 28,000 students. I'm going to give you a shocking comparison and then a more realistic comparison. University of Colorado Boulder doesn't have a med school, has about 33,000 headcount students. They have approximately 2,600 full-time faculty. 700 here, 2,600 here. There's clearly a major gap, and that gap is reflective of a state that hasn't invested in the people who make universities, the faculty and the staff. So we need to bridge that gap. We can't identify a major Research One institution with less than 1,100 faculty. So our proximate concern right now is, how do we find the revenue flow, the economics, the research activity to build ourselves from the 700 we have now by about 400 to get to an 1,100 faculty? Because I'm convinced with the quality of the faculty we have, when we hit those marks, we will in fact be a Research One university, and we will be entering the top tiers of universities. But we have some gaps to close, so I'm going to be proposing a business plan to the state. We'll talk about resource gaps in the form of wet lab space, research space, numbers of faculty that we have. We'll talk about it in terms of the scholarly achievements, the economic impact, and the total grants and revenue flows that we bring into the university. We'll talk about it in terms of graduation rates. We'll talk about it in terms of resources, inputs, and we'll talk about it in terms of graduation rates and dollars generated and reputation outputs. And what we believe is that we're a great investment, but we need our state to understand that all the competition around us is investing deeply, and that that investment is the best single investment a state can make to ensure the economic health and prosperity of its citizens. And so, look for the new effort, UNLV Tier One, as we roll this out, but I will be using these statistics to talk about what it takes for UNLV to be a great place and what kinds of entrepreneurial activities we're going to have to indulge in to generate revenue flows. So while we're talking about entrepreneurial activity, I'm going to briefly mention UNLV now. You read about it a lot, you hear about it a lot, people love talking about it. There's times when I'm worried that it detracts from our academic focus, because what we really are concerned about first and foremost is the quality of the campus life and the academics of this institution. So let's be completely clear. We wouldn't be talking about putting an event center on our campus if we didn't think it was going to be good for the campus, if we didn't think it would stimulate a better campus community and life, if we didn't think it would create a Mill Street-like atmosphere, like you can see at Arizona State, where students could really convene, get together, recreate, and enjoy a vibrant campus community. And we certainly wouldn't do it if it was going to take money out of the coffers and put them into a venue as opposed to putting them into athletics. So as we move forward with this exceedingly complicated project, and I'm going to tell you, the number of stakeholders is huge, and the complexity is like nothing I've ever seen before, the first thing I'm going to tell you is it's hard. We've got a great team working on it, the best team that I could hope for. We've learned a tremendous amount in the last two years about how these things go together and the conflict that's involved. There are challenges in it. I won't tell you it's going to happen. I will tell you that our understanding of how to make this happen has become increasingly more clear, and the challenges and hurdles that we have to clear are well-identified. We understand the costs, we understand the impacts, we understand the economic returns. One principle with whatever direction we ultimately move on with this project will be, it must improve the quality and reputation of UNLV, and it must, must, generate a revenue flow that will directly benefit athletics. As currently construed, this project will guarantee UNLV a revenue flow. We will have a preferential first bite of any income stream coming out of this that will be guaranteed. We won't settle for less. The guarantee will be significant, and I won't put a dollar figure on it now, because we're still haggling over terms with our partners, but this principle is firmly embedded in every plan that we have. So what I want you to feel comforted by is that not only will this be a great amenity that will do the kinds of things great campuses do for their cities and their students, but that this will be part of how we understand we can fund and expand educational access and great educational programs, endowed chair positions for faculty, endowed scholarship positions for students as we move forward. And I think it will be an important piece of the puzzle if we can get this thing across the finish line. So I don't want to create false hope. I want you to understand that we have made tremendous progress that is exceedingly solid, that is based on very hard, thorough analysis, planning, documentation, construction plans, master planning, and economic terms and business pro formas. So that's where I'll leave the UNLV Now conversation. But I'll also tell you, I don't think this could work in any town except Las Vegas. We're the largest conventioneering city in the world. We're the largest city in the United States that lacks a major event center that can seat over 20,000 people. It's a good pairing, and it's a pairing that could work here, and we hope that it can work to the benefit of our students, the benefit of our faculty and staff, and the benefit of Las Vegas. With that, I'm going to turn it over to any questions that people have. Okay, apparently I got athletics and academics mixed up. Revenue flows to benefit academics, in case I didn't say that clearly enough. Thank you, John. I hope you knew what I meant, but we will set the record straight. The preferential slices that we're returning will be to support academic programs. Let's be clear. Okay, now it's time for Q and A, and any and all questions are welcome, as always, and if you need more advice about how to interact with the legislative session, we'd love to supply that. So, questions from the audience? Wow, really? Come on. I know some of you have something to say. Good. Is that Paul? Okay. With a, Paul with a haircut.
So the question has to do with, I understand the governor has proposed changing the funding formula with regard to how the F grades are counted, and it looks like this is happening in a way that's disadvantage, disadvantageous to the universities, to ours in particular, and I'm wondering if that's accurate and what, what sort of plans you have to, to deal with that. I'm just wondering, then, secondly, on the issue of compensation, I mean, is it the case that the, that your administration has made compensation? It sounds as though this is, this is the case, but that the restoration of competitive compensation is really the first and foremost priority, and that really should be taken care of before anything else really, in principle, is dealt with? Is that, has that been your position as you interact with the governor and legislative leaders?
I'll answer the second question first. It's absolutely been my position that we need salary restoration. That is our top priority. Now, I gotta say, co-top priority with benefits, because the benefits issue is, in essence, a salary issue, and it's a health issue. So those two, we bundle together as part of the wellness and satisfaction of faculty. So in every conversation that I've had with the governor and with the chancellor or with the regents about priorities, that's been everyone's top priority. It started off being ours, but everyone else has jumped on the bandwagon. And I'll, and I'll tell you, our chancellor is defending that position as well. So the first is, our opinion is that salary restoration needs to happen this time, and it needs to be whole. In fact, we'd love it if we had cola and merit, but right now, we don't even have salary restoration, so we're trying to be realistic. The, let's see, what was, the first issue was about the F grades and the formula. The changes that are being proposed require, you know, a series of calculations, and at least, it's our best estimate that at the end of the day, when you do it for the whole system, that UNLV will actually benefit from the proposal of the governor not to count the F grade as a completion, because our students are pretty good, and we don't have as many failures in those as some of the other institutions do. There's things to worry about in that, and there's vagaries in this that I'm not sure will come out whole after the haggling over the formula, but if Jerry wants to address that further, I'd, he's been digging down on a daily level with whatever permutations and combinations the formula has generated as people recommend new changes. Jerry?
I might just say that the governor's changes were to take all the F grades out of the universities, take basically 25% out of the Nevada State, or leave them with 25%, 75% out, and have 50% out of the community colleges. So it looks like it disadvantaged us the most, but the community colleges, on average, had the much higher percentage anyway. And so, when you net it all out, it's a modest plus, and so I think it was done more for political reasons that, you know, if you're going to reward completers, an F, some people don't consider a complete.
Some like, "Oh, students." All right, are there other questions about any of the other initiatives we've discussed Diane?
I can't let you leave without another question about health insurance. Despite the efforts of the task force and Vice President Bhamathi, and very much appreciated, and the good news about Chris Cochrane, I listened to the December meeting, and it appears to me that the message is not getting across to the members of the board of PEBP, and certainly not to the person who was giving the report, because there are a number of comments that were made, for instance, regarding whether the message is getting across. That is, the PEBP member giving the report indicated that it appears that although the survey that was taken indicated a high level of dissatisfaction, and that was with a sample of 9,000 responses, it seemed that we were getting less complaints, and therefore, maybe people are getting used to the plan or understanding the plan, because we're getting less complaints up at PEBP. So that was one remark. Another person on the board who was fairly new also indicated that, "Well, what is this a question of? Is this really a question of getting additional choices?" I mean, and narrowing the focus of the issue to additional choices. Now, as you know, they rejected the mid-tier plan, which was resembled the plan that we had many years ago with a $500 deductible, and they didn't really give us much of a choice, because they proposed having both plans, the high deductible plan along with the mid-level plan, rather than instituting simply a mid-level plan. That didn't even come up to the table, although that was what the task force is supporting and has very much supported. The other remark that was very disturbing from the member was, this was from the person giving the report, who read the comments and said, "Well, on top of all the salary reductions, we also have a reduction in health benefits." And his conclusion was, "The issue was not the health benefit plan, but the cumulative effect of the economic situation, and therefore, maybe we should do a better PR job of communicating." All of that indicated to me that the message isn't getting across. So my question is, how do we, as a campus community, therefore, make it clearer to legislative, to the legislature, that this is a very serious issue?
Sure. Good questions, and for some of you that didn't listen to that PEBP board meeting, the people who are making the presentation primarily were either PEBP staff or their major consultant, a group called Aon UAT, a multi, large multinational corporation that's been their healthcare consultant for a long time. And I agree that, you know, they're, they're, they certainly appear to be putting as much lipstick on this animal as they possibly could, and, and the facts of the matter, I think, to the contrary. There are some new board members. I think they haven't really come up to speed on some of the issues. Those of you that watched the meeting probably or may know that Chris Cochrane wasn't our, our faculty member, wasn't allowed to vote at that meeting, and so the middle tier came up to vote. It failed four to four. He was not allowed to vote. He certainly would have voted for that. So there's, there's still work to be done. I mean, I, I measure progress with PEBP as small steps there, but I think, hopefully, we can gain some momentum and, and as I mentioned earlier, for fiscal year 15, and that work has to be done this year, to be able to come forward with better programs, more options for people, a better value for the amount of money that's being invested. And so, the changes to the national healthcare level are going to impact that, but basically, what we're going to do is take what PEBP has as a self-funded program, where we do not believe, I do not believe, they get very good rates, and that's part of the problem for the value. And we're going to go to the market and be able to work with them with the market to see, what can we get for fully insured program options, so we can compare those and look at them. And one critical issue that I didn't mention, it's kind of down in the weeds, but that I think we did have success with PEBP as well. You can't get good rates for healthcare coverage if you cannot give those individuals good and detailed information. And it took us a year to get the data for NSHE employees from them. They have acknowledged this is a problem, and so they're working with us to correct that problem and set up basically a data warehouse, so that at any one time, and hopefully before June, they will have all that before June, they will have all that data so that when we go to market, we'll be able to show, you know, people that are going to be looking at these programs, the same type of data that Clark County School District would show them that any other coverage entity would be able to show them. So I agree that there's still some people who think that we just haven't warmed up to the high deductible program. It's really good, people just haven't recognized its value because it doesn't give them any money for their prescription drugs, amongst other things there. So those will take a while to work on, but again, I think there's some opportunity for fundamental and systemic change for fiscal year 15. And in terms of what can people do, I mean, people I know have contacted board members. We now in NSHE have two members on the board, Jackie Ewing Taylor, faculty member in Reno, and Chris Cochrane. There's also other board members that you can contact. A number of our staff in NSHE have contacted legislators. Legislators I know have raised the question about, is this a good value? What are we doing? Why am I getting complaints? And so all those options, I think, are ones available to people if they want to choose them.
I would encourage you that you, that you communicate on that topic. It's one that is a very strong sore point for all of us.
I have a question, and maybe Jerry can answer this. The increase that we're getting in our retirement, what is the purpose behind it? I have a difficult time trying to explain to the faculty that we may get some money back, but then they're going to still take it away because we have to give this extra percent. And I know some people will be getting, you know, that additional match, but it's still trying to explain why that's being done at a time when supposedly we don't have the money.
Well, I mean, try to explain it. First of all, NSHE is the only public employer in the state that is, that has a defined contribution retirement program. Everyone else is on PERS, the Public Employees Retirement System, a defined benefit program. The actuarial analysis, the financial analysis of that program is, it's underfunded, and it will have financial problems in the market for their investments and everything else if, in fact, they don't inject more revenue. There's only two ways to inject revenue. Get better returns on the invested asset, which is not a sure thing, or increase the contributions, which is a sure thing. So for the last few years, those contributions have gone up from, I think, maybe four years ago, 10 and 1/2% an employee and employer, to what will be next fiscal year, the governor's budget is approved, 13 and 1/4% employer and employee, up from 12 and 1/4%. The state has historically given the same contribution rates for the defined contribution retirement program as they have for PERS. They don't have to, but they have. And so if you're in PERS, you're going to pay more, you don't get any different benefits. If you're not in PERS, you'll have to contribute a percent more, but you're going to get the matching of a percent. And it's all because, it's all tied to what they're doing with PERS, because the overwhelming number of public employees in the state are in PERS. And so when the state looks at that, they just see one retirement system. Just like if you watch the governor's speech, he said, "We're restoring merit." When that's, when someone says merit, we think about it in a different way. The state thinks about that as state classified steps.
Any more questions? And just let me know right away if they're for Jerry.
I'm Haroon Stephen from Civil Engineering Department. I think my question is for Provost White, and it's about the listening to departments. So we went through the round one. What were the key findings? I believe it was that finding a strategic vision for the departments. So were there any common visions that we share? And that's part one of my question. Part two is, now, as we move into the round two, what are the long-term goals, and how are we moving forward in the round two to, to address the, the way you phrase it, rebooting the campus?
Sure. So in round one, I would say that the, the one thing that bound everyone together was a desire to improve their departments. Every department had a different way of describing where they were going forward, and some of the reports were better than others. There was a little bit of issue of inconsistent involvement in the preparing of the reports, and since I didn't do the actual listening parts, which Dr. Miana and the president did, they can maybe talk about what they observed. In terms of this step, though, what we want to see is, where do you see yourself going? How do you see your department becoming better? And how do you benchmark that against other departments doing similar things at other universities? This is partly connected to the president's Tier One project of trying to see how we can improve the university's reputation. In terms of, like, long-term steps based on this conversation, I think we also want to think about, how do we work with the departments that we have under the circumstances that the president described, a limited faculty, to get better? And if we get an opportunity to improve our faculty size over the next several years, how do we allocate those resources in those contexts? There's an additional part, too, which is, we have a new provost team, and this listening exercise will be conducted by, by me, by Carl Ryber, by Gregory Brown, and some of this is for us to just listen to what's on your mind and where you see your department going, and how do you think we can help you? We sent a list of questions that are really designed to just kind of cover some of the things that we've thought about over the last six months, but you shouldn't even conceive of it as limited to that. The document, though, that we want is really to try and encapsulate your vision in a short space of how do you benchmark yourself and how do you see yourself improving over the next years? All right? Other questions? Other, other questions? Yep, they were getting up but not coming forward. Now the president will tap dance. No.
If it, if it got us more money, I'd definitely do it. Or if it restored the pay cuts. A point that Luis reminded me of, and I will tell you that all of us are still stinging over the PEBP thing, and, you know, in my heart, I would just love to find an alternate structure, which I've been told is not likely. So, I mean, why we need an amateur board doling out benefits on a statewide level evades me, but I'll let that one go, Luis, because I know I'm not supposed to talk about it. Yeah, well. PEBP. It's definitely not about the Board of Regents. Okay, so if you're going to lobby, and I would encourage you to be active in this one, it would be our legislators who would actually be in charge of authorizing, approving, and conversing over the details of how PEBP operated and distributed funds. The PEBP board itself has a narrow enough charter that they appear to have fewer degrees of latitude than we'd like, other than, we'd like the vote back, please, with Chris Cochrane voting this next time. So I would suggest that our legislators, and your particular legislators in your districts, are people who you would love to appraise of this. Let them know the challenge and the problem, and let it know, let them know it's a hot-button issue. It's a hot-button issue on a statewide basis. I think that that could be quite effective in elevating the conversation. If there are no further questions, I've taken up quite a bit of time on a rainy winter afternoon. I want to, again, say to all of you, thanks. Thanks for everything you do. You really matter, and with all of us working together, we're going to get to where we need to go. Progress is solid. We're making incremental gains. Some of the things that we're going to do are big dreams, but, you know, when you're at the bottom, it's the time to dream big. So I hope you join me in that. And with that, enjoy, enjoy the rest of your semester, and I'll look forward to seeing you all in the not-too-distant future as the session rolls out, and hopefully, we have some good news here and there. Thank you.